I'd like to call the Town of Orange Town Planning Board Meeting for July 26th to order. Mr. Young, will you listen to the question?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first up is, uh, first up is Project Sycamore, PB number seventeen dash forty-two. Would you state your name and your affiliation with the project for the record, please?
Yes, good evening, I'm Brian Quinn, I'm the attorney for the applicant. My office is at sixty-seven North Main Street, New City, New York.
Ed Hesselbacher, the project manager for the owner, Colliers International, Twenty West Thirty-seventh Street, New York, New York.
Mr. Quinn, is the green light on in that microphone? Just push the button, sorry.
Peter McCabe, structure tone, project executive for the construction side, structure tone, three-three-three, Thirty-Fourth Street, Manhattan.
Okay, Mr. Quinn, what's up?
Well, we were at the last planning board meeting before you on June twenty-eighth, at which time we received final, final site plan approval, we thought we were done. In the course of that meeting, a question was raised as to how construction vehicles were going to enter and exit the site. You may recall JP Morgan Chase is buying a sixty-one acre piece, but there's still an operating hospital there, and the Office of Mental Health, I'll refer to them as OMH in the future, still owns a lot of property, and we're proposing to come up through their, their property. We've had many discussions with OMH, there are many issues that need to be resolved, there are many easements that benefit OMH that need to be removed from the site to have it developed for the planned data center. They've been cooperating with us, the engineers have been going back and forth, there'll be some replacement easements that are needed, we need an easement from OMH coming up from the south to power the data center. So, in the course of a subsequent conversation with OMH, after we had received final planning board approval, the question of construction vehicles came up, and OMH, let me go back, we consented to that, we said we're fine coming up from the south. But in a subsequent conversation with OMH, they voiced great concern about that, said that they have very sensitive instrumentation at the Nathan Klein Institute, and so we became very concerned about the imposition of that condition. So, we are back to ask that that one condition be removed from the final site plan approval that this board gave us on June twenty-eighth. I can tell you that since that initial conversation, Peter has had several conversations with onsite people from OMH, including Steve Albomont, and we are in continuing discussions with them, we would like to be able to utilize the access from the south, but it does appear as if we still need to have that condition removed to ensure that we have the ability to come in and out of the site, to do the remediation, the demolition, and then the construction of the new data center. At this point, I would turn it over to Pete, who can bring everybody up to speed on the discussions had with OMH, and perhaps what is maybe most interested to the board is, is the number of construction vehicles that will be coming in and out, you know, hours of operation, things of that concern.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so the conversations with Stephen from OMH really drive through the Nathan Klein Institute and some sensitivities to the equipment. Their proposal, that we are in the process of reviewing and trying to come to resolution with, is they will, they are amenable to truck traffic, construction traffic, coming up from the south approximately up until nine-thirty in the morning, their programs start around nine, they gave us a shoulder window of approximately, say, half an hour to forty-five minutes. From that point, the request was, if there was truck traffic, could it come from the north of the site? Obviously, the location, let's say the entrance point to the site with that would be Third Avenue and Convent, entering from Convent from across the reservoir. Terms of what we consider truck traffic, we've kind of split the job up into three phases in a discussion point. First phase being the site remediation abatement, the majority of that construction traffic will be labor only, the remediated materials essentially get packaged onsite and only are removed onsite unless they can fit basically onto an eighteen-wheel trailer, as they are abated materials. What we think on that, in terms of load per week, we will have two abatement contractors working through the thirty-nine buildings, they're projecting to have one tractor-trailer to two leave the site a week, that would be a total of four, with approximately forty to fifty folks per team, so that'd be about eighty to a hundred labor, labor on the job. Majority of that labor is sourced from a local labor haul, so there will be some carpooling. That approximately is the first four weeks of the job. The demo of the buildings, majority of the material in those buildings are going to be reused onsite, the only material leaving that site will be the architectural in nature, wood, majority of that masonry and concrete is going to be recycled and used onsite for fill, so we don't envision a majority of that material leaving the site, only the architectural in nature. If we look at that, that process we think is thirty-yard containers stacked and rolled, probably bi-weekly or twice a week, and they, they look to probably stack about eight containers, so for a day they would bring in new thirty-yard containers and haul the other ones out, I think that's probably one and a half times a week. Then the construction begins, majority of the construction material, the big iron or the, say machinery to do that, because of the size of the job, will not leave the job, there'll be mobilization, we envision majority of the big machinery staying on that site until the use is over, so we don't envision it coming and going.
Okay, what else?
That's all I have.
Okay, Cheryl, what's the story here with the, besides the PRC, what am I, what am I looking, that's it?
That's just a decision showing the condition.
What's the condition that you're looking at, what number is it?
Number thirty-five.
Thank you, okay, so the PRC has no additional comments beyond the comments submitted by other agencies. So, the condition that they're looking to have removed is during any construction on the project site, all construction vehicles shall use the roadway entrance exit to Veterans Memorial Drive? Okay, so I think that, oh, I'll wait, go ahead, Bill, you have any comments?
I really have no comments, Mr. Chairman, the construction project's got to get out with this material.
Mr. Dell?
Thank you, sir. I understand your situation, and I can also understand this little bit of a hardship, it sounds like you've made some good efforts, I just have a number of questions. The remediated material you're referring to is primarily asbestos, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and you'll be taking that out in the usual way, in sealed bags, et cetera, in accordance with all the regulations, and I'm glad you're going to be leaving most of the concrete on the site. One thing I didn't quite get, maybe I didn't hear you, what are the proposed hours of operation for the removal?
The removal of construction?
Materials, yes, debris.
We would consider that part of the construction day a seven to three-thirty day.
All right, so you're not going to be running, you know, in the evenings or nights or weekends?
No, Mr. Dell, yeah, obviously the town has strict conditions on, you know, during hours of operation for any contractor within the town, and we certainly will be in compliance with that.
I know, but we are keeping a record, and there may be some people who may not be familiar with that, I'm just trying to clarify it, make that part of the meeting possibly be a little simpler. Okay. Mr. Mandell came up with a very interesting suggestion, that the trucks be diverted further to the west to possibly go through the former children's section, has any thought been given to that?
Yes, we actually did speak to OMH about that, the orange is the new black, we'll re-engage in that lot shortly, they are, they have to review the lease timeframe, if there is not a conflict between the two entities, they were amenable to discussing that, that was one of the takeaways to the meeting.
Okay, the other thing is you said that RPC will permit truck traffic until nine-thirty AM, and then they stop, what time do they say you can start again?
The next day.
The next day, yes.
The next day?
So...
What time do they start the next day, otherwise you have no time?
Seven to nine-thirty, and then after nine-thirty they ask that they don't go with it.
Oh, seven to nine-thirty in the morning?
Yes, sir.
Okay, is it possible to schedule the dumpsters to be removed during that time?
Yes, I don't see that as an issue.
All right, because that'll radically cut down the traffic during that time. Okay, now, we assume you're going to be doing through the standard procedures, the trucks, the tires are going to be washed down, coming in and out, all the wood will be covered, we assume?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I would request as one board member, because of the nature of that site, all the dust, et cetera, that as the truck leaves, you just give it a quick spray down, that could also cut down additional dust in the area. Now, that's one person speaking, obviously I'm not speaking for the whole board, but having been involved in your type of situation, I don't think that's a hardship, and it may make it a lot better for the, for the, for the neighborhood.
Understood, yes.
Would that be a problem, then?
No, so one of the advantages to this job site is a majority of the roads already constructed, there'll be no construction roads during a majority of this project, it will allow us, Plaza Road does allow us the ability to create a wash-down area, and it's our intention to do that.
Good, if you could just wash down each load, just put a little water on it, keep the dust out?
Yes.
Before the wood goes rumbling down the road. Okay, about how many yards of wood do you think there's going to be in that type of debris, any idea?
I don't, to be honest with you.
Okay. All right, next thing, obviously it'll be a question of the, for the trucks, the hours with the exhaust, et cetera. I just am concerned, of course, that this be done in such a way, obviously to mitigate the impact on the contiguous properties, I think you are also aware of the same concern. As said, if anything you could be done during those hours of operation, I think that would be fine. Now, the one part we haven't mentioned at all was what happens when the building is constructed.
Right, so, a majority of this building, steel and precast in nature, again, requires one mobilization, a crane mobilizing to the site, steel deliveries, deliveries occur in the morning, generally, based on the size of the job site and the delivery process, all deliveries are going to be scheduled because of the nature of the size of the project. I don't envision a majority, to be honest with you, once you get to the construction process, most of those deliveries will be scheduled in nature, in terms of derricks of steel, precast, they obviously need a fair amount of preparation for that work to begin, so we could schedule that accordingly.
I understand, but again, I'm trying to see if we could push as much as we can to that seven to nine-thirty window in the morning, and I know...
You know what, this is, we, we can do that, you know, you could try to get them to do that, but it's a construction project.
I'm familiar with construction projects, Mr. Chairman, I try not to interrupt you, I would appreciate if you'd just let me speak, even if you violently disagree with what I'm saying. Thank you. All right, so, well, how long do you estimate the, the removal of the debris process to take you, how many months?
Demolition process, approximately four months.
Four months. Construction process?
The project from start to finish is approximately two years, inclusive of the three phases.
All right, but the initial phase to get you going?
The abatement phase, approximately four to six months, the demo process approximately four to six months, the remainder is the construction process, correct?
Okay, and you intend to go throughout the winter, et cetera?
Yes, sir.
I assume you would. All right, thank you, those are my questions, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bond?
It seems like they're taking every precaution to try and mitigate the...
Mr. Sweeney?
You answered most of my questions, I have one more, I know we're talking about, because of the machinery, and the, and the sensitive machinery at the hospital on the south side, moving the trucks to the north, is it possible during that time to kind of alleviate some of the congestion, maybe have all the non-heavy equipment come through the south, like the employees, the labor that you talked about, kind of flip it, so maybe we're diverting the amount of cars coming into the south to offset the trucks coming into the north?
Uh, we can talk to OMH regarding that, again, there, we're in discussions with them, probably further discussions required there, and we'll definitely ask.
Because cars go through the, now, I can't imagine them objecting to cars going through the south entrance, that would be a good balance.
Agreed, a majority of the car traffic is going to unfortunately find its way to the site, one way or the other.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mandell?
Most of the questions have been answered, I concur with most of Mr. Dell's comments, and hopefully that their talks with OMH will go on properly, and they'll be able to use the children's psychiatric. There's one thing brought up a project review, if you can use the children's psychiatric and we're going to use eight-thirty avenue, that you'd be able to place some traffic controls out there, ensure that people stop at the right places so the trucks can get in and out, if, you know, it were possible, it might be something to think about.
Large deliveries will have flagmen in the roads.
Right, because if you, if they pull past those lines, you know, stop line, you can't make the turn.
No, understood, there's a visibility issue, correct?
Right, so, you have somebody, okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Mandell, is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak to this? Yes, sir, come on up to the microphone.
Just speak your name, sir?
John Killian, Convent Road, three-sixty Convent Road, I didn't hear anybody...
Hold on for one.
Killian, K-I-L-L-I-A-N.
Mr. Killian, right here.
Yeah.
So, I'm going to, I usually, because there's a lot of things on the agenda tonight, I usually limit people to three minutes, so...
All right, well, I, I have just one question, I didn't hear anyone talk about school buses. School buses pick up in the morning, they're at nine, eight-thirty, nine slack, that's the very time your bus, your trucks are coming in.
And, and what's your question?
I mean, that's a question that's going to confuse us even more, like, because the school, the school buses will be picking up there on Convent Road, that'll, that'll slow down the traffic again.
Yeah. Did he say it's going to slow down the traffic, right? What's the timeframe, he was saying, eight-thirty to nine in the morning?
Roughly.
Well, the buses along Convent Road will be picking up, I think, between seven-thirty, maybe seven-fifteen, and then going...
But what they're saying is, they're going to be coming in the south during that time, anyway.
Right, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
So that, yeah.
Yes.
Addresses that concern, I think.
For the, for the most part, they'll be coming through, they'll be coming through the other way, off of three-oh-three, between nine and, between seven and nine-thirty.
Yeah.
That's what the Office of Mental Health is, the New York State Office of Mental Health has, has allowed them to do.
Yeah, all right.
Thank you, anybody else? I see none and I hear none, I need a motion to close. Thank you, Mr. Bond, a second. Mr. Young, thank you, so, do I need to...
Just, just take a vote to, to remove condition thirty-five.
I need a vote, a motion to remove condition number thirty-five, with, with the caveat that the applicant tried its best to work with the Office of Mental Health to use the hours of seven to nine-thirty, to the best of their ability, and also, I'm very happy with what Mr. Sweeney said, I think that you should also do your very level best to get the non-construction vehicles to use the south entrance off of Orange, the old Orangeburg Road, past the Nathan Klein Institute, as much as possible as well. Yes?
Just another condition, that when the trucks do use Convent, they come out, they go westbound to Blue Hill Road, not eastbound.
Okay, so that's the other thing, right, so they have to push themselves up to, to Blue Hill Road and down to three, to Orangeburg Road.
We can live with not going east on Convent Road.
And not going east on Convent Road, okay.
I just want to, again, in good faith, I hope this board understands how I usually act on, on these kind of things, we are doing our best, and we'll continue to do our best to get all of these discussions with OMH finalized, but at this point, I have to say that nothing is definite, we will do our best.
Yes, we understand that, but we ask that you do your level best, and that's why we're removing it for you, okay?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just the point I made about them wetting down the loads before they take them out?
It's just, you're, okay, you wet down the loads before, and you follow all good construction practices?
Yes.
Okay, which is wetting down the, the road before you, okay? Keep the dust to a, to a minimum, please?
Yes.
Okay, is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, I need a second, Mr. Bond, seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Quinn.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is North Middletown Road, PB number seventeen dash thirty-five.
He's back.
Hello, Bruce. That's what I was told the other day when I came back.
There's a lot of people, don't, don't feel bad, because there's a lot of people on this agenda tonight that are, you know, back for some reason.
My name is Bill Brodsky.
Mr. Brodsky, okay, go ahead, your address, please?
Uh, two-seventy-five North Middletown Road.
Mr. Brodsky, what are you here for, I mean, dear God?
Okay, hopefully this is a simple matter, originally what we were doing was, we were splitting units, unit two D into two D and two E, when I went to do it, John Giudello told me I had to come back before you board, because the original, original resolution in two thousand that I had approved, had me approved for eight units. However, over the years, through the building department, we've gone through different building permits, and we were granted the permits, we, the building morphed from eight units over the years into about fourteen or fifteen units. So what John wanted me to do was, instead of just coming back before the board, making a request to split unit two D into two D and two E, he wanted to come back, show you the entire plan, and then have us get building, building permits and COs for the remaining units. The majority of the units in there already have COs, all right, but he just wanted me to make it much more obvious to the board, and have the board do an internal approval of the, the building, and that's why I'm here.
PRC has no additional comments, is there anybody in the audience that's here to talk about this? Okay, I'm just going to go through these comments, they're in the back, if you have any questions. John Giudella has three, Bruce Peters has none. Rockland County Department of Planning has none. Rockland County Highway has none. Rockland County Health has none. Rockland County Sewer has none, and there's cars, bondance from the Rockland County Highway Department, Orange Town ZVA. Rockland Health, not objecting us serving as lead agency. Mr. Young?
Just a general comment, Mr. Brodsky, you, you're just here for the CO, the work has already been done?
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
The doctor is already in his new office, so we're just...
We're just here for formalities, to make sure it's done properly.
Okay, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Young, Mandell?
Yes, all my questions have been answered, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Dell, Mr. Bond? Thank you, Mr. Bond, Mr. Sweeney? Thank you, Mr. Sweeney, Mr. Mandell? Thank you, Mr. Mandells. Is there anybody in the audience that objects to this? I hear none, I see none, I need a motion to close the public portion, Mr. Mandell makes a motion, Mr. Bond, seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Need a motion to, what's that? Okay, so I need a motion for lead agency, Mr. Bond, Mr. Mandell, seconds, all in favor? Need a motion for neg deck, Mr. Bond, Mr. Mandell, seconds, all in favor? Aye, need a motion for final with conditions. John Giudella's three. That's it. So I need a second? Mr. Young, seconds, all in favor? Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
Just in case anybody's wondering, they don't all go that quickly. Right, Mr. Brenner? Right, Mr. Quinn? Right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, speaking of people who've been back here about a half a dozen times, Hawks View, PB number seventeen dash thirty-six. And they are here for final, we think.
I hope.
Okay, so, I guess you'll have to state your name and your record, your address for the record, please, and your affiliation?
Jay Greenwell, Lanceavere, eighty-five Lafayette Avenue, Suffolk.
Okay, Mr. Greenwell, what do we got?
You had continued us at the last meeting at our request, we were to provide a landscaping plan that was submitted to, and the landscaping plan and the site plan and the building plans were all reviewed by Akabor and approved last week.
Okay. So the PRC has no additional comments, everything else has been read into the record?
Yes.
And there's the, what do we call this? Yeah, Akabor, what do we call it? Oh, decisions, that's it, sorry. It's been a long week, so, that's it, okay, so I need, anybody in the public wishes to speak to this? Oh, sorry, you're right, even though we beat this to death, go ahead, sorry, Mr. Young, guy, anything?
I'm going to beat this one to death too, Mr. Greenwell.
There you go.
On the south portion there, the new landscaping plan on that existing McAdam driveway of the south resident?
Yes, yes.
We're not going to have any issues in the future with that resident?
I can't promise that, but all I can say is that Mr. Magrino has put a memo on the record that if there is any claim of adverse possession that was to be successful in court, then this lot would have to wait until that was resolved, something to that effect.
Right, it's in the subdivision approval, and we'll put it in this approval, it's, I mean, for all intents and purposes, it's, it's on their property, so, until the court says otherwise.
And, and...
We've all seen, come on!
I'll let it go.
Thank you. Mr. Dell?
Yes, thank you, it's a very nice landscaping, very thorough, far more than what we would normally see for a house of this size. The one thing I just kind of wonder is the property that was alluded to, to the south, that's the one area where you don't really have any screening for the vast majority of the distance, was there, how would I say, a visual reason why you didn't do that, or...
Absolutely, the, the applicant wants to take advantage of the Hudson River View, this is one of the...
I know, but this is to the south, not to the east, I'm talking.
Oh, to the south?
Yes. Unless I'm reading the plan wrong, which has happened before. Yeah, down here. Where is the, that's south, that's north, that's south.
But it's not your mark?
No.
You were talking about, up, up to the property...
The area that Mr. Young was just referring to.
Yes, there is a lack of screening there. I didn't prepare the plan, if...
Okay, what I, I would, I would make a condition, it would be my opinion, having done this for many years, that it might behoove you to put some evergreens in there, if nothing else for your client's edification.
I will make that suggestion.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dell, Mr. Bond? Thank you, Mr. Bond, Mr. Sweeney? Thank you, Mr. Sweeney, Mr. Mandell?
Yeah, just, I concur with Mr. Dell on that, that they should put some sort of screening along there, go a long way to keeping both parties apart. Has the plan been submitted to the Rockland County Highway Department for approval, the plantings along Tweed?
The landscaping plan?
Yeah, it's Rockland County Condition Number Two, must approve landscaping within the right of way by Tweed.
Oh, well, that's, yes, there isn't any...
There's landscaping on Tweed.
Yes, there is, we, if, we have to apply for a county highway permit, I will make sure that, and you can make it a condition of the approval if you... I will make sure that, and you can make it a condition of the approval if you see fit to do so, to indicate that in making the application for the county highway permit that's required, the landscaping plan should accompany the submission.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll go with that, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mandell, is that it?
Yes, that is.
Thank you, Mr. Mandell. Is there, I don't know, is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak to this? I see none and I hear none. Thank you, Mr. Bond, I need a second. Mr. Sweeney, seconds, all in favor? Aye. And I need a motion for final? With conditions? Mr. Bond makes a motion?
Yeah, I would just reaffirm the previously issued negative declaration on the subdivision. It was previously given as negative declaration.
Okay, so then I need a motion for neg deck. Thank you, Mr. Bond, you need a second? Reaffirming neg deck. Anybody want a second? Mr. Mandell, seconds, all in favor? And I need a motion, we got the motion from Mr. Bond for final? With conditions? So we're gonna first put in the, that the applicant is going to make an attempt with the owner to screen on the south side of the property line, is that right? Thank you. Okay, so I have John Giordella's three. We have Bruce Peters' five. We have Brookers' four. Rockland County Planning, we have seven. Were there any that we overrode?
Let me, if I could just take a quick look at that.
Well, I don't think that it... You would've asked us to do it before, because these are all read into the record.
I believe so.
Okay, so that's the end of that. Rockland County Highway Department, again, we're also going to ask the applicant that the landscaping plan be submitted with the application for the Highway Department's permit. Okay?
Yep.
And they have, Rockland County Highway has their five comments with some bullet points. Rockland County Health. You need an SDS plan from the Rockland County Department?
And you read into the record the subsequent letter, which was the approval letter.
Okay, so, nothing from Sewer. Okay, and that exactly what Mr. Greenwell was saying, the July third, two thousand seventeen approval letter from the Division of Environmental Health? And then that's it, as conditions go. Second? Mr. Young, seconds, all in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, PB number seventeen dash thirty-eight, the Cardiovascular Research Foundation's Site Plan.
T-A-N-A? My name is Hugh Linnahan. L-I-N-N-E-H-A-N. E-H-A-N.
Okay, so can we have who you are and what you do?
My name is Joseph Montana, I'm the contractor for the project.
Mr. Montana, is that green light on?
Yes, it is.
Okay, I can hardly hear you, go ahead. And you're the gentleman to your left?
My name is Hugh Linnahan, I'm the Director of Operations for the Skirball Center for Innovation.
Okay, so you're the engineer? Is that what you said?
Contractor.
Oh, contractor. So who's speaking?
I will.
Okay, so let's, what are we here for?
Okay, we're here for a pretty simple addition to the north side of the building, which is gonna be mainly storage and partially an addition to a, a, um... The addition is for the...
It's for a...
A cat skin room.
Okay, that's good. Mr. McGree, are they here because it's a, to add on to the commercial site plan?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a site, they have to come for the...
All right, just seems a little... Is that it?
That's it. Quite simple.
Okay, see what we got. PRC has no comments. Jane Slavin is the architect?
Yes, she is.
Okay, so she's just giving an explanation of what's going on. John Giordella has five comments. Bruce Peters has nine. Brooker Engineering. Yeah, I just wanna, I just wanna read it, I can't get it. "Sufficient information and detail have been provided to demonstrate that there are no potential significant impacts with respect to drainage that require mitigation. We therefore recommend that the Cardiovascular Research Facility Site Plan be approved for drainage subject to the five comments." Rockland County Planning has four. Rockland County Highway? Do you need a permit? A highway permit?
Yes, they are saying so, I'm not sure why, but yes, we'll comply with that.
Okay, will you work that out with them?
Yes, we will.
And that's it? Cheryl? Okay. Mr. Young? The people in the back, we're trying to keep a record, so if you have conversations amongst yourselves, we ask that you take it outside, because I can hear you and I'm sure that the sonographer can hear you too. Okay? Mr. Young?
No general comments, this is just preliminary, though? This is...
I guess so.
Yes, it's for preliminary, we're also asking for an exemption to go before the Architecture Review Board because of where the addition is on the building, and it can't be seen from any roads or any neighbors.
That's your call, but it was only advertised for prelims, so...
Yeah, but I saw, they still have to come back then?
Yeah.
So, what do you think? I mean, okay, we'll just, let's see what everybody says, okay?
I have no comments.
Mr. Mandell?
Yes, you're part of a rather large industrial park, it was Tequila International, it actually has travertine on that building, if I'm not mistaken, stone?
That is correct.
Yes. Obviously, no one's asking you to make it out of stone, certainly I wouldn't, your addition. It's very small, it's in the back, as you said, it's raised, and its impact is negligible, and I think it's a fine plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bond? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sweeney, Mr. Mandell? Okay, so the problem is, is that you didn't advertise for final? What's that? What do we do, Cheryl? Yeah, but the thing is, we're not meeting for six weeks.
That would, that's the situation.
That's it, right, they have to come back. Sorry. So, we'll wave Akaboor, I need a motion to wave Akaboor?
Motion.
Mr. Mandell, seconds?
Did you give an opportunity to open up the public?
Oh, no, not yet. Well, I'm still doing, I can do this, I can do that first, and then they can speak.
Do what?
Wave Akaboor.
I guess, but...
Okay, I'm not, I'll, I'll eventually get there. So I need a second? Mr. Bond makes a second, Mr. Sweeney, Mr. Bond made the first, Mr. Sweeney second, all in favor? Aye. Okay, so I need, anybody in the public wishing to speak to this? I don't see anybody, need a motion to close the public portion?
Motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mandell. Thank you, Mr. Sweeney, all in favor? Aye. Okay, so I need a motion for lead agency?
Motion.
Mr. Mandell first, Mr. Sweeney second, all in favor? Aye. Need a motion for neg deck? Mr. Bond first, Mr. Mandell second, all in favor? Aye. And I need a motion for preliminary with conditions, and the first condition is that they don't have to go to Akaboor. Thank you, Mr. Sweeney, for stepping up to the plate.
Just a question.
Just hold on, let me read these and then you can ask your questions. John Giordella has five, Bruce Peters has, I think I said nine, I did? Rockland County Highway has two, oh, no, just the one about the permit? And that's it?
Mr. Chairman?
Hold on, hold on, I'm sorry. Department of Planning, these fell out, I'm sorry. Has four. Brooker Engineering has five. And that's, I think that's all I have, right? Okay, so who wanted to ask a question?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Mandell? Okay, well, that's in the record now, that you're gonna make it a similar color, right?
That's fine, yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I...
Just a question, is there any way, I know it wasn't advertised for final, but...
They're saying no.
If they need to do any, start anything, is there any way they can start anything?
It's not really land clearing operations, right? I mean...
Not really, no.
So, okay, so just be the building.
I mean, yeah.
Okay. So I need a second for preliminary. Mr. Mandell makes a second, all in favor? Aye. Okay, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is the HNA Training Center Site Plan.
Yes. Coakley. C-O-K-L-E-L-E-Y, I believe, Coakley.
Okay, can you introduce yourselves and your affiliation with the project, please?
Yes, Mr. Garvey, good evening, Brian Quinn, I'm the attorney for the applicant. My office is at sixty-seven North Main Street, New City, New York.
Chris Costabile, I am the General Manager at HNA Palisades Conference Center.
Jesse Coakley, fifty St. Ridge Road in Modvale, with Mazur Consulting, the engineer of record for the project.
This involves the, what was known for many, many years as the IBM Conference Center in Palisades. It is bounded on the east by State Road Route nine W, on the west by State Road three forty. It's a site approximately a hundred and six and a half acres in size. It's an existing conference center, and I'm not sure, I've been there many times, hopefully you have been there too, it's a beautiful piece of property. It's a conference center, so it was used for many years by IBM to train some of their employees, it has now been purchased by HNA, and they are continuing that same use. The conference center is, it's a special permit use, they also have a special permit there, previously granted by the Town Board, which allows them to do catering there as well, too. The proposal is, is to add, at the facility itself, there are a number of rooms, approximately two hundred, where participants in conferences can stay overnight there. The proposal is to add approximately another hundred guest rooms there, approximately twelve thousand square feet in size. I will turn this over to Jesse Coakley, our engineer, to give further details with respect to the proposal.
So, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
So, as Mr. Quinn mentioned, there will be to do HNA's incorporated facility with an addition to the guest accommodations. If you're familiar with the site, on the plan here, north is up, is Rockland Country Club. On the east side of the property, it's nine W, which is the main entrance, and on the back side of the property, it has small front and down Route three forty. The extension that we're talking about is really gonna be east of the existing building, so when you drive in and come to the drop-off area, it's gonna be on your right-hand side. So that's where the addition is gonna be. All of the offices and dining areas and conference centers are all in the building. When you drive in to the left, this addition will be to the guest services on the right here. So, this is just a zoomed-in version of the guest accommodation area, showing the expansion toward the east. So as Mr. Quinn mentioned, it's a hundred and six acres. Really, the need is because the existing rooms are single occupancy, only one person is permitted in, and that really limits what HNA is able to allow and bring in clientele. They don't have enough guest spaces for the corresponding conference center that they have, so often they're, I'll say forced, but they have to send some of their overnight guests to the other hotels in the area, as opposed to being able to keep them on the property. So, the property currently operates only four hours a day, obviously there's overnight, the peaks are really Monday to Friday, during normal business hours, eight to five, and that will remain unchanged as part of the operation. Right now, the ordinance requires, based on the addition of rooms, will be a slight increase in the parking. However, HNA really only experiences fifty-five to sixty percent occupancy activity. Even when you add in these rooms, that will not come close to approaching the six hundred something spaces that are provided here. The ordinance requires for this type of use, which really is the only parcel in Orange Town that has this type of use, parking permits for the offices and the conference center, plus the overnight guests, when really, a lot of those people are gonna be wanting the same, so you won't have people that are staying over that are not also using the conference center. They also get, because of their facility, the average stay is two and a half days, we'll say, usually above, you know, weekend or a few days during the week, and companies will fly in their people or bring them, and so a lot of times, they arrive by shuttle bus from the airport, Uber, taxi, et cetera, so the parking isn't really a huge concern for them at this time, so the additional spaces are really just supposed to be land backed at this time. Again, whatever mechanism that needs to be put in place can be put in place if the board feels that the parking is becoming a problem, they have no problem doing it. If you look at the plans, you try to locate the parking spaces in an area that would be easy to build, they kind of fit right in naturally in the rest of the parking lot. Lastly, just from a zoning perspective, the site is fully compliant with bulk zoning except for one requirement, which is the required side yard. So, the property is subject to a one-hundred-foot buffer when it's adjacent to any residential zone, and there's residential zone to the south, but that's not where this project is either, it's six hundred feet away or something like that, but the golf course is actually a residential zone. So, there is a one-hundred-foot buffer on the property, and then the one-hundred-foot, one-hundred-and-fifty-foot side yard requirement gets added on top of that. So, the existing building falls within that and is non-compliant, and the proposed expansion will also fall within that set act. The one-hundred-foot buffer of vegetation is remaining between the disturbance and the golf course, so that's staying the same. But we will have to go to the zoning work for that. We got comments, we can discuss those, any questions you have, we have answers.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Young? Oh, you know, I've got to read the comments. The PRC has no additional comments. From the Office of Building Zoning and Planning, these comments are in the back, if you want to read them, I'll go through the highlights. One of the ones I'm gonna read is from John Giordella. "The yard setback is measured from the buffered setback line, therefore, the proposed side yard is fifty-one point four seven feet and not one fifty-one point four seven feet. The required side yard is two hun, one hundred and fifty feet and not two hundred and fifty feet. The required total side yard is two hundred and fifty feet and not three hundred and fifty feet. Please correct the bulk table. In addition, the proposed side yard of the site plan shall be labeled as fifty-one point four one feet. A zoning board of appeals variance needs to be sought for yards, for side yards, since a hundred and fifty feet is required and only fifty-one point four fi..." A zoning board of appeals variance needs to be sought for yards, for side yards, since 150 feet is required and only 51.47 feet is provided." Here's another one that you'll need to correct, number three. "The plans have been labeled, the addition as a proposed five-story hotel. Please be advised, a hotel is not a permitted use by right in the LO Zone District. A use variance will be required for a hotel. Please clarify the proposed use, the executive conference facility allows housing for the use of participants administrators. The total occupancy, including administrators and participants, shall be limited to 18 persons per site acre. Therefore, please provide on the plans the existing number of housing rooms, existing proposed administrators, and add that to the proposed new occupants for the new housing addition." And then there's five more. Also, number six, you have not provided a landscaping plan.
Correct, so, what I'm showing on this rendering here, the colored plan, a lot of the existing vegetation is gonna remain around the clearing. We would certainly look to supplement. I've showed a couple, you know, trees on this plan here to show our intent, but we definitely are willing to work with the board and ACABOR on that, because, as you know, you've been to the site, it's a beautiful site, it's well landscaped, they would look to keep that in kind, and they're not looking to screen it at all.
Okay, well, I just think that you're gonna need a landscaping plan before you come back.
Absolutely.
Bruce Peters has 12. Booker Engineering. "Sufficient information and details have been provided to demonstrate that there are no potential significant impacts with respect to drainage. We therefore recommend that the HNA site addition plan of application be approved for drainage, subject to the above nine conditions." Rockland County Department of Planning Number eight, "The number of stories in the proposed height expansion must be clarified. The bulk table building height for the proposed structure indicates it will be 37 feet. It must be clarified that this is correct since the building layout plan indicates that a five-story addition is to be constructed."
So, the building will be five stories total. However, the floor-to-floor height is nine feet, six inches. So, and what we did was, the rear of the building, which faces the closest property line where the height definition is generated from, the back first story will be buried below grade.
Okay.
So that, the four stories there is 37, is how we got the height.
Rockland County Division of Health, two. That's all I have, Cheryl. Mr. Young?
Mr. Coakley, I believe you mentioned it during the presentation, this is accommodation strictly for use at HNA, correct? It's not a hotel?
Correct, it is not a hotel, it's not for, like, that use, no.
Understood. That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Young, Mr. Dell?
Yes, I actually was involved in reviewing the initial site when IBM brought it in. We went through quite a few sessions and brought it to be the buildings that you see now. What I see you doing now, in my personal opinion, is certainly well within keeping with what was there. It's a campus-type setting. I think your parking is fine. The height of the building is understandable, particularly since you have the one half-story and to, at least half the story into the, into the ground. Other than that, I think it should be a fine project, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dell. Mr. Bond?
Yeah, I have no issues with that.
Thank you, Mr. Bond, Mr. Sweeney?
I have nothing new to add.
Thank you, Mr. Sweeney, Mr. Mandell?
Just a couple of questions to clarify. So, the usual night-to-stay you stated for trainees is overnight, maybe two nights at the most?
I believe, yes, I believe that's the case.
Two to three nights.
Two to three nights?
About two and a half days.
Okay. We know long-term residents there?
No, sir.
Okay. Regarding the building, now that's, 'cause I don't see an architectural rendering of what the building's gonna look like, if we can have that when you come back again.
I have one with me now, I can show it to you for preliminary, but it will definitely be submitted.
Yeah, because I was over there today, and I'm looking at your building right next to the, is it a pond there with a little waterfall is-
That is correct.
Okay, and that's the building you're gonna expand up on?
Yep, it's gonna match that, be like the brick facade.
Okay, so when you're coming across on that new walkway that'll take you across to the second floor-
Yep.
Which will really, if you came out on the backside, it would be the first floor on the backside facing the side yard, 'cause there's four stories there, right?
I think it's actually gonna be the third floor.
Third floor?
Uh, but yeah, that's where it will come, and it'll be the second on the backside.
Oh, okay, all right, and you're gonna be land banking the additional parking spaces?
That's our intention.
So therefore, your area of disturbance is gonna be less than an acre?
That is correct.
Okay, so no swamp will be needed then? Okay. Rockland County Planning wanted to know if you're putting in backup generators, you do have backup generators there now, I think. Yeah, okay, that's on the south side of the property?
It is.
By the loading? Is that gonna be more than ample to supply power for an emergency situation, at least the lighting and, so that's, is that gonna be expanded upon?
It has the capacity, yes.
It has the capacity now?
It does.
Okay, so it has the capacity. Now, you're gonna change that stream upon it in any way, or is that gonna just remain the way it is?
It's our intention to leave the pond undisturbed.
Okay, all right. And I guess that little waterfall is your mosquito control for the-
The application will have to go before them, I'm sure. If they don't already have the, you know, necessary precautions in place, the health department will have us put those in.
Okay. Including dunks.
There is fish in that pond, so.
Oh, yeah, I saw him, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
That's your mosquito control?
I don't.
It's true. Okay, all right, thank you for your assistance.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mandell. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak to this? Please come up to the microphone and state your name and your address for the record. Given the size of the meeting tonight, I'm gonna ask you that you limit your comments to three minutes.
My name is Paul George, and I'm in 46 Hayhoe Woods, so I'm the house that's right.
Can you show us, and I'll, I'll credit your time, but can you show us where on that?
Sure.
Thanks.
So where's the, this is the IBM right here?
This is IBM.
I'm right here.
Yeah, so now go back to the mic.
All right. So, as I understand it, you're not constructing anywhere near my house, you're constructing more towards the east.
I guess they're saying no.
Do you want me to answer?
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 we're on the other side of the property.
Okay, so my question is that you spoke about adding some new parking. You know, one of the things, you know, when I moved there, it was there already, you see lights, you know, at night, especially in the winter, cars driving back and forth. Are you gonna add more parking spaces in that area?
We're not gonna make them add the parking, they have a sufficient, we're just gonna ask them to land bank the parking, which means that if they, if, right now, it'll just stay as land, and if they need additional parking, they have to come back and ask for it.
Okay.
And the other thing is, is that, just not to interrupt, but to interrupt, the lighting, any kind of additional lighting will have to be approved by ACABOR as well.
Okay.
Okay, and then you'll get a chance to go, and you can talk about that, but generally, we try to have them limit the amount of light pollution by putting down lighting in, so that it doesn't, you know, disturb you.
Okay, I appreciate that, and as far as the, 'cause I don't know how high the IBM, I haven't been back there in a long time, it's, the where it's gonna be elevated is, again, on the far side, so-
Yeah, that is correct.
It's not gonna affect my visual at all.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. And it's gonna, it'll, just to clarify, too, it's gonna match the height of the existing, it won't be any different.
It'll match the height.
Okay, thank you, those were my concerns.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, please come up and state your name and your address for the record, please.
My name is Eileen Larkin, I'm a resident of Palisades for about 45 years. I was wondering if they could elaborate on the type of training that is conducted on-site, and to definitely remove the word hotel, because it sort of tells people that you can come here and stay there. Now, I know that they, he said before that it's basically a nine-to-five or an eight-to-five, Monday to Friday, business that they run there, and, but what about the weekends? Do you have cater, do you cater affairs in there on the weekend?
We have, we have meetings on the weekends, conferences on the weekends, just to say. And again, the property, I'm sorry, we have, I mean, we operate seven days, 24 hours, but we do have meetings on the weekends, as well as different types of businesses, you know, that does meetings, they're Fortune 500 companies primarily. As we indicated earlier regarding catered events, yes, the property has the ability to do those events, and they are sometimes on the weekends.
Like a wedding, or?
Correct.
Okay, and so the two bedrooms that you're planning to put in this new expansion?
Okay, Mrs. Larkin, we're gonna go to protocol here, and, because I don't, it's getting a little bit-
Excuse me, Mr. Garvey, the two bedrooms-
Mrs. Larkin, I'm just gonna tell you how this is gonna go, okay? This is not, this is not an affront to you, I'm just letting you know, because we're going, you're supposed to address your comments to the board-
Oh, okay, all right.
And then we'll ask the applicant.
Okay.
So that way, you get your full time, your full three minutes, and there's no argument at the end, okay?
Okay, no argument with that.
Thank you, Mrs. Larkin.
Thank you.
Okay, so, let's start again, go ahead.
The two bedrooms.
I'm sorry, one more. Mr. Quinn, I asked that you write these questions down, and then, exactly, okay, thank you. Go ahead, Mrs. Larkin.
The two bedrooms, will they have any amenities in the rooms, such as a kitchen or anything like that?
Yeah, oh, no, no, you're gonna answer the questions at the end.
I'm sorry.
Okay. First of all, I'd like to tell you, I lived in, let the gentlemen know, I'm a resident of Palisades for 45 years. When IBM came in there, we had, we had a civic association at that time, and we had a meet and greet with IBM. They did a rendering of the site, so what I'm extending to you as a resident of the community, and we also have a small association, again, is to welcome you to Palisades, and to welcome you to a meeting that we might have in the fall. So you could explain to us what you're all about, what type of companies they have there, coming in for meetings, and so that they get a sense of the community of Palisades. We're concerned about our community, we're concerned about the zoning, and that site, 100 years ago, when an old man, Kevin, owned it, and so it's an important site to the residents of Palisades, so we'd like to continue that, but we'd also like to know, when you hear it's a five-story building, it's a concern. And I think we should have restrictive covenants, no more than a five-story building in the area. But obviously, there's no concern about this right now, but if the answer, if my questions could be answered, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Quinn, go right ahead.
Yes, I think the question was about the two bedrooms, will there be kitchen facilities, and the answer to that is?
No.
No, no. I appreciate Ms. Larkin's comments welcoming us, and I think we're always willing to meet with members of the community, that would be Chris, be happy if she wants to reach out to you, to meet with you. While it is a five-story, again, I just wanna repeat, it's the same height as what is there already, we're not making it any taller, we're not seeking anything, it's not, it's not even a height variance that's required. The only variance we need is the buffer, because it's a budding residential property, which is the golf course.
We understand.
Yes, I think, I think I've answered all of the questions.
I do, too, thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience that wishes to speak to this? I see none, and I hear none.
I'll make a motion.
Hold on, go ahead.
I was gonna say, I noticed that you have a sign there that says active heliport.
There is a special permit that was previously issued by the town for a heliport, I don't know how often it's used, but there is a permit in place, Mr. Mandell.
Okay, just wanted to know, I saw the sign there, it's, okay. So, and, is Larkin also asks the type of training conducted?
Yeah, the training is, it could vary depending on the business, but typical, it's usually, it's usually training of, a lot of times, new associate-type training. It could really vary. You know, Citibank is one of our largest clients, Cornell University, Unilever, LG, so it really, really varies, but all of the business, again, is all corporate, and that's a sense of training, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mandell, so I need a motion to-
Just one comment, and we'll come up there on the decision, but obviously, whatever the permitted use is, is the permitted use, and, you know, it's executive conference, lecture, seminar facility, so I just wanna put that on the record, that that's the permitted use there.
Thank you, sir. You have a heliport there, I assume you're aware that there are restrictions of height with anything within 500 feet of a heliport. Long as you, I know that was a pre-existing permit, but you're building something new, just wanna make sure you're aware of it, thank you, that's all, sir.
Yes, Mr. Dell, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bond. Who's, who is that? Mr. Mandell, thank you. All in favor? So I need a motion for preliminary with conditions?
Lead agency.
I'm sorry, I need a motion for lead agency. Thank you, Mr. Sweeney, I need a motion for neg deck. Thank you, Mr. Bond. Thank you, Mr. Sweeney. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Bond makes the motion for preliminary with conditions. John Giordella's eight. Bruce Peters, 12. Booker Engineering's nine. Rockland County Planning's three. Excuse me, 15. Rockland County Highway, none. Rockland County Health, two. That's it. Need a second for preliminary. Okay, thank you, Mr. Young, and just for the record, the renderings the next time you come, or the architectural plans for us, and also the landscape plan? Okay, and please, ahead of time, yes, thank you.
And we're gonna actually run into-
All in favor? Thank you. Okay, next. Defiant Brewing Company Site Plan and Conditional Use PB, permit PB number 17-40. What happened, did they get, did they get a violation?
So, but have they, but there's been no violations issued?
What's everybody in the back, what is, what's going on back there? Maybe for the scay? For the, for the, huh? Good evening, Mr. Brenner, can you tell us your name and your affiliation with the project?
Name is Donald Brenner, attorney in Depan, New York, and I represent the client, Mr. Asa, who is Defiant Brewing.
Okay, Mr. Brenner, thank you. Good evening, what's up?
I think you gentlemen know, Defiant Brewery's been a, actually a positive addition to Hamlet of Pearl River, they brew a very interesting and new type of beer, they've been in the community for over, close to-
12 years.
12 years, and they were kind of hoping to expand their operation a little bit, so much in terms of having, when people come, they can have, like, little gatherings, which would take place in one of the areas in the building. The building is zoned LI, based on the fact that it's on the LI, the only way you can have this kind of a situation is you have to get what they call a cabaret or nightclub license. So therefore, we're coming in on this application for this one area that he is renting, which we are calling a cabaret. The, if I can continue on it, the real critical thing involved here right now is that this- The, if I can continue on it, the real critical thing involved here right now is that this is part of a very large condominium, the Dexter Company, the Dexter Company's a large condominium which has many, many tenants in the building. We finally obtained approval for the layout of the buildings where Mr. Acer is located in, and he's located in four dash six East Esther Plaza. And the map for that area was finally signed about two weeks ago, which allotted certain parking spaces to certain areas. On the areas that Mr. Acer is renting, he has been allotted only four parking spaces. However, he does have other areas which he rents, where he manufactures his product and which has an additional eight or 10 parking spaces. Meeting the code for a cabaret, he will need probably 72 parking spaces. So therefore, what we're really here for tonight is to get your permission to go to the zoning board to get this variance. And the reason we feel we'll be able to obtain it is based on the fact that when Mr. Acer runs his operation, the building is closed and all the users of existing parking there are not there. And there is a tremendous amount of parking in that area, if you know the area.
That it?
Yes.
PRC has no additional comments. John Giordella has seven. Bruce Peters has none. Rockland County Planning has four. Five, sorry. Rockland County Highway Rockland County Sewer, that's it. That's all I have. Mr. Young?
No comments, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Mr. Dell?
Yes, it's a very interesting area that you're in. I remember Dexter Press when they made actually the postcards. Sounds like a very interesting project. I'd like to find out what the ZBA thinks. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dell. Mr. Bond?
I would agree that there's plenty of parking there that people could find after hours.
Thank you, Mr. Bond. Mrs. Sweeney?
Something at this time waits to act differently from what's due yet.
Thank you, Mrs. Sweeney. Mr. Mandell?
Yeah, just a couple of comments. When you come back, please update the plan, remove the stage, since there's no stage there in the, in the beer hall. The plan shows a stage.
Oh, we're just changing that to be a different type of material.
Is it gonna be a stage or not?
It'll be a small stage as in the drawing, yeah.
Okay, and we're gonna have entertainment on the stage?
Yes.
Okay. And so that lighting that's up there is for the stage?
Yes.
Okay. Has a fire inspection been done yet?
We had the fire inspector through, we have a full approval from the fire inspector, we have two, one entrance and, and exit, and the fire inspector has approved the flow of the-
Yeah, we haven't, I haven't seen any paperwork from them showing the approval.
When they gave Mr. Bertuzzi the approval for the building, that was part of the approval for that. I will show it to you, we have that-
Yeah, but that wasn't for a beer hall or cabaret or whatever you want to call it.
We, we will meet the fire inspector requirements.
I think we, yeah, we should have a report from the fire inspector regarding the exits from the building, the sprinkler system that's in there regarding, since you're gonna have people in that place. And on the EAF, on page two, number eight, you said there'd be no substantial increase in traffic, though it appears that there would be an increase in traffic.
What kind of traffic? Car traffic? What's, what's the definition of traffic?
Most of the traffic that would occur is people, let's say if there's a small party when the place is empty, so there will really be no, any kind of serious effect on the traffic. We will get you something to substantiate what we're saying, that there will be no traffic problem.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mandell. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak to this application? Thank you, come up, sir. State your name and your address for the record.
Peter Bellhaus, 190 Ridge Street, Pro River, New York.
Can you speak into the mic?
Okay. How's that, that better? Sorry, she was a little, she was a little shorter. Last name?
Bellhaus.
Bellhaus, B-E-L-L-H-O-U-S-E. Just implore the board, I'm also a business owner in downtown Pro River on 22 East Central Avenue, Quantide. In regards to the parking, I know this has been an issue before with other restaurants and new applicants that are trying to go before the zoning board. It is a downtown area, so I'm a little perplexed by the need for 72 spots when the train station and the post office and all the other existing buildings need these additional spots. I just asked that you grant Mr. Acer and Defiant Brewery, he is a good neighbor and we've both been in business for over 12 years in downtown Pro River. We're two little guys trying to make a good living here and with all these zoning board and I understand that's the way government works, but I think we originally went through this, where I would say Mr. Acer went through this 12 years ago when he tried to open originally and then he was opened and then he wasn't opened and then there was clarification about what we're going through again with the cabaret license or nightclub or what Dexter Plaza was zoned for. So I think if you look back 12 years ago, I think this was all, should have been addressed already. Since he's already opened, I just asked that, if we could expedite this, that'd be beneficial to all of us concerned, that's all.
Thank you. Anybody else? I see none and I hear none, so I need a motion to close the public board. Thank you, Mr. Mandell. Second? Thank you, Mr. Sweeney, all in favor? Thank you. Okay, so I need a motion for neg deck or lead agency. Thank you, Mr. Bond, for lead agency. Mr. Sweeney, seconds, all in favor? Need a motion for neg deck. Mr. Young, Mr. Sweeney, seconds, all in favor? And Mr. Bond makes a motion for preliminary. John Giordella's seven. Rockland County Planning's four. Rockland County Highway's two. That's all I got. And then also, you'll bring back the, the letter from Michael Bettman saying everything's A-OK.
Right.
Okay, so you have preliminary, we need a second. Mr. Young, seconds, all in favor? Aye.
I was just wondering, there was also conditional use permit.
So I need a motion for the conditional use-
And then, right, preliminary, if everybody's addressed it, yes, you can look at the conditional use and subject to the final cycle of approval and they can back.
Okay, so I need a motion for preliminary.
We gotta reopen, right?
No, no.
We didn't pause it?
No.
We didn't make the final vote?
No.
We voted for a free vote.
It's a separate vote, yeah.
Pursuant to 8.1 of the votes.
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Bond makes a motion.
In 8.1.
Mr. Mandell, seconds, all in favor? Aye. Thank you. For the preliminary conditional use, they'll come back for final, when they come back for final.
That's fine.
Okay. Finish with that one. Three left. Next up is the Spark Hills Palisades Fire District. PB number 17 dash 41.
What's your name, sir? Okay, how you doing?
Mr. Atzl, you forgot about us, you don't like to come back and see us anymore?
I love coming to see you guys.
Holy cow.
John Atzl, Atzl Nasher and Ziegler, severe engineers and planners for the project.
Okay, so if, if you're a neighbor listening to this, are you? Anybody, so I, I just ask that you come up a little closer if you're comfortable where you are so that you can hear everything. Sometimes the mic don't pick, mics don't pick anything up. Who? Yeah, okay, but they're all the firefighters.
Correct.
I'm pretty sure they're for it. So Mr. Atzl, who's to your right?
Jerome Jefferson, Cornfeld Room, Newman and Simeoni, 46 Washington Avenue, Suffolk, New York, attorneys for the Spark Hill Palisades Fire District.
Okay, so who's gonna speak?
Mr. Atzl.
Mr. Atzl, what have you got?
Yes, okay, this is a proposed 6,000 square foot addition to the existing firehouse on Route 340 down in Spark Hill. It's gonna be actually constructed on the east side of the building, the existing building between the building and the restaurant, which is the steakhouse. We won't be impacting any neighbors, actually, all the area that the work is gonna be in is already land that has been developed. We do have one issue being the 100-year floodplain, so the rear portion of the proposed addition will actually be on columns thereby not being subject to the 100-year floodplain and not impeding the 100-year floodplain during 100-year storms. We've read all the comments, we've received all the comments, we have no major issues with any of the comments and we need to go to the zoning board of appeals, Akerbor, and then come back to you for final.
Okay, thank you. PRC has no additional comments. John Giordella has four. One, floodplain permit shall be submitted, that's number one. Elevation certificate issued and then the two variances that are required.
Yes.
Also, you, nope, that's it. Okay. Bruce Peters. Once again, these are pretty technical comments, so if you're interested, you can just go and see them in the back. He has eight.
Nope, no problem.
Booker Engineering. Sufficient information and details have been provided to demonstrate that potential significant impacts with respect to drainage have been mitigated. We therefore recommend that the Spark Hill Palisades Fire District Site Plan Application be approved for drainage, subject to the above nine comments. Rockland County Planning, 11.
Any issues on any of those?
No.
There's nothing in here that's terrible. Rockland County Health, mosquito code?
Not an issue.
Rockland County Drainage?
Yeah, we've actually submitted the application for the Rockland County Drainage Agency permit that's required because of the Spark Hill Creek and we're awaiting comments from that agency.
Michael Bettman says that there's no comments. Which is pretty, pretty weird. And then, you know, correspondence from the Rockland County Department of Health, Orange Town ZBA and somebody else who didn't, and look at that, Spark Hill Palisades Fire District. And Rockland County Highway not objecting to this board serving as lead agency.
New York State, New York State, United States DUC.
Yes, and there, and there, we had a DUC. They have four, five comments. Mr. Atzl?
Yes.
Okay, no problems? Okay? They object?
That, that was original. That was before we had our, when we were at the informal last week.
Oh, good, because if you don't pull it, I'm not gonna, what's that?
Yeah, I mean, interestingly, the DUC says they have no objection to the City of Beacon Planning Board assuming lead agency, I'm assuming they meet.
They're talking about the-
I'm talking about the fire department not objecting to us being lead agency.
Right, well, you know, and we can discuss that, there's, there's two ways to handle that.
Yeah, pull it.
Well, we had that discussion. There, there's two ways. One, the reason that they wanted to be, that the fire department wanted to be lead agency is because they are, any agency that's funding or approving an application has to do a secret review. So I, from my understanding is they're going out for a bond at some point?
Correct.
So theoretically, that does need a, a secret review. There's two ways to handle it. One, the traditional way we do it here is for purposes of site plan, you determine yourselves, the planning board will be lead agency, which would seem to make sense, certainly for site plan, but there's really no way to do that. The other alternative, without impinging upon their desire to be lead agency for the bonding, the alternative is to do what's called an uncoordinated review. As you're correctly pointing out, any approval that this board gave without a negative declaration would be invalid, just like the ZBA determination, et cetera. So it would be in everyone's interest, including the applicants, that this board at least do a secret review, whether it's coordinated or uncoordinated. Again, we, we're, if it's, if it's an uncoordinated review, we don't necessarily establish lead agency. I mean, it, I think it, it throws a monkey wrench into things if, if this board establishes lead agency and then they determine that they want to be lead agency for the funding. So I'm assuming you still want to be lead agency for those purposes.
Why can't, why can't the bond company or the, whoever the, who's ever issuing the bonds, recognize the board, this board's and saying that we've done, we've done the proper review, which we've done a thousand times since I've been here.
Right, it, it could. There, there are some DUC decisions where, let's say the parties didn't agree and the DUC in certain circumstances might even come down on their side and say, you know what, okay, you be the lead agency. The problem for them though is, as you say, we'd say, okay, thank you for coming, come back after you've issued a negative declaration and, you know, that doesn't really serve their purposes or-
The, the reason for the objection was to protect our timeframe. We didn't want, we didn't want to come here and find out, we didn't know what the comments were gonna be, we didn't know if there was gonna be a problem with the neg deck and if there was going to be, if there's gonna be an issue of who had to be lead agency, if we had to go forward on our own at that time. It appears if it's gonna be a neg deck coming out of here tonight, that should not be an issue.
So you have no objection to the planning board being lead agency?
I mean, I, we've had numerous fire department additions-
Correct. And it's never been an issue.
Again, again, our concern is when it comes to the budgeting part of it and everything else, that it's not gonna have to come-
Okay, so I'm, I'm gonna respectfully ask that you pull the, the, okay? So that you're not throwing a monkey wrench into this whole thing because, you know, we, we can tell you to come back, you know, you guys can figure it out and then you can come back. You know, you'll ask for a continuance to come back, but, you know, you can see how fast that we're going through this and everything is happening, I think, to everybody's benefit. Is that correct? I mean, that's subject to whatever the neighbors have to say, but-
No, that's correct, but again, that's why at the informal last week, I put that in, not knowing where we're gonna pull it or what we're gonna do.
Okay, so I think that we're in agreement that you're gonna pull it, we're not gonna, we're not gonna make it, usually I read it in, I'll just, I'm not gonna even-
Well, when you say pull it, you're consenting to the board, this board being lead agency, is that what you're saying?
You're changing your status then. You're consenting to us being lead agency.
Correct.
Okay, okay? Okay, thank you. So, everybody commented? No, okay, so I'm sorry. Okay, Mr. Young, go ahead.
I have no comments, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Dell?
I basically have no comments, assuming you can go along with other conditions provided by all the other consultants, then I have no problems with that, so, thank you.
Mr. Bond?
You know, peers are a great idea, putting towards the Spark Hill Steakhouse is here, so I don't know if she's-
Thank you, Mr. Bond. Mrs. Sweeney?
Just really quick, Bob, is there an issue with this saying City of Beacon Planning Board on the top of the DUC?
The City of Beacon wants to move-
Wait, and they can't-
It was also addressed to, not me, it said me up top and then to dear Mr. Spears.
Yeah.
Sloppy work by DUC, okay, no other problems.
Government, over-governmental, so to speak, sorry.
Just a couple of quick clarification questions. On the EAF, page four, you state regarding encroachment on existing wetlands, the answer's no, however, you will be putting peers on the existing wetlands, is that correct?
Actually, it's not wetlands, it's just a 100-year floodplain, it's not considered wetlands.
Right. And when you do come back, I'd like to see on the, what are you gonna do as far as the Bruce Peters comments for the oil water separator, for the water that's running right into the Spark Hill? Are you gonna put that in or an equivalent?
Yes, we're gonna, yes, we're gonna address his comments and make sure any water entering Spark Hill Creek has been cleaned.
Okay, when you come back though, I'd like to see that on the plans.
That will be on the, yes, that will be part of the, part of the next submission back to this board.
Okay. And, so you're, you're building, I was gonna say, before you said it was just to the east side you were building, correct?
Yes.
But you're also coming around the back also?
Yeah, a little bit around the back, but it'll all be on peers, yes.
Okay.
On the backside.
Yeah, the backside, okay, so you, you're also, and what's that, the-
Backside is the north side.
North, okay, so you're gonna be working on the north and the east. All right. I think there was a question too with the, with the handicap spots there, I think it was Rockland Planning or John's, one of the comments.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Okay, that's all at this time, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mandell. Is there anybody in the audience?
Yeah.
Please state your name and your address for the record, and again, I'd ask that you look at your comments in three minutes.
Hello, my name is Lori Peek, P-E-E-K. I live at 262 Washington Street in Tappan. And I'm here speaking on behalf of the Spark Hill Creek Watershed Alliance. And we've actually, our group has put in quite a bit of time planting trees and riparian buffers along that very area. There's a little stream that runs between the restaurant and the firehouse. And we did things to strengthen the banks. Is, I don't, I don't, I haven't really seen the plan very carefully. Is all that just gonna be thrown away or built over, or does it go up to the edge of that? Will you try to preserve that? Because, you know, the flooding that results when you don't have enough retention on the, the banks of these waterways is one of the big problems we have with the Spark Hill Creek, as well as affecting the quality. So, if someone could tell me how they're going to be protecting that stream, or what they're gonna be doing to all the plantings we put there, I would love to hear about it. Thank you.
Mr. Atzl?
Yes. Uh, yes, there is, there is a water course that runs between the firehouse and the restaurant. We are sliding our access road over towards that a little bit, but we won't be impacting the banks of that. The Spark Hill Creek is also at the rear of our property. We are subject to Rockland County Drainage Agency Permit. Mr. Peters has made his comment about requiring an oil-water separator, so any water actually exiting the site will be clean water. And...
What about the plantings?
The plantings, I don't believe we're gonna be impacting any plantings either, because we're not moving that close to the stream bank. And in the rear, we're not moving any further than the existing parking lot. The north line of the existing parking lot at the rear of the building, we are not going past that.
Okay.
So, it's already all, all paved area right now.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else who wishes to speak to this? I see none and I hear none. Mr. Bond makes a motion to close the public portion. Mr. Mandell seconds, all in favor? I need a motion for lead, oh, did I do that already? No, so I need a motion for lead agency. Mr. Bond makes a motion, second is Mr. Mandell, all in favor? And I need a motion for neg deck. Mr. Bond makes a motion for neg deck, second? Mr. Mandell seconds, all in favor? And I need a motion for preliminary with conditions. John Giordella's four, Bruce Peters, eight. Booker Engineering's nine. Rockland County Planning, eleven. Rockland County Health, one. Rockland County Drainage, their conditions.
No, just making sure, because I was wondering the condition.
Why would it be referred to Piermont?
It says the...
Piermont is, the Village of Piermont is within 500 feet of our property.
Was it?
Done, good.
Okay, that's all I have, Cheryl. Second? Yeah, so we're gonna also put in there that they're not gonna impact the stream on the east side, or encroach on the west further than what the parking lot's already there.
On the north.
I'm sorry, north, sorry, north. Young seconds, all in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
No, Jesse's gonna be with me. Got any love letters for me, kid?
Okay, Donald Brad, attorney for the applicant, R R I S Corporation.
Jesse Coakley, major consulting engineer of record for the applicant.
Okay. If you know the property itself, the property itself has a boarding house in there which has eighteen beds available for rental, of which fifteen are rented at the present time. It's an old boarding house, and then behind it is a place that actually had retail and storage for car parts. The applicant at one time thought of building a four-story hotel there. We got to the preliminary stage, but we pulled back the application, feeling that it didn't fit into the neighborhood. They were just trying to continue the operation, which would be a retail operation of which they would have. They're gonna remove the, the place where the rooms are rented, and they're gonna remove the old structure. They're gonna build a new facility, which will have retail and operations. That is correct, that's where Napa was. The hotel will be taken down, the rooming house will be taken down, there will not be a hotel.
This is approved for a hotel?
No, no, we came, we came, it was, it was decided that it was economically not a sound thing to do. So, what they are doing is they're gonna take the rooming house down, and they're gonna take the old structure down and build a brand-new one.
Thank you.
Here I see there's no additional comments. John Giordella's five. Bruce Peters, fourteen. Booker Engineering recommends with sixteen comments. Is there anybody, if you're interested in these, they're all out in the back, they're technical, especially from Booker, about drainage. Rockland County Planning, nineteen.
Yes, we have some comments on that.
Okay, so which ones?
Okay, first of all, when I spoke to Ollie, she said they did not deny this, they're just asking for certain modifications. And there was one question, number eight, they read the code wrong. There is no deductions made for any kind of easements on commercial property. In our town, the only deduction is for residential properties.
Mr. McGreen, have you agreed?
Yes, but floodplain issue, where did she get that, floodplain issue?
I don't know, not an outcode.
I believe in the, in the bulletin table, it does say for residential properties, wetlands, floodplains, easements, et cetera. So, it, it is preceded by saying residential properties.
Note number sixteen.
Yeah, notes, notes...
Yeah, sixteen is part of a minimum lot areas requirement for residential, not more than fifty percent of any land underwater within a wetland or subject to flooding, et cetera. So, it does apply to the residential for the lot reduction. So, it's not applicable.
Do you consider we're taking it out?
You can take it out. You can override it.
Which one? Number eight. What else?
We have a certain question that's related to number nine, of which Jesse would like to talk about.
Well, there's a thing here, because she has, I guess this is nine, ten, or just two, so which ones are nine, there's ten of them?
Eleven of them. I mean, I can talk about them, but we feel we can either add striping to the, to the plan to kind of help the traffic flow, or potentially look at the rear parking lot to go like with a one-way circulation that would allow for some turnaround. Either of those could be, could be done.
Well, what are we supposed to do? Override all of these?
You're the planning board, it's your call, what do you want to do? I, what's, what's that next door, right next door to it?
Which one?
The door. Is that the hotel?
Yes.
That's the Holiday Inn.
Is there a, would it be, would it make sense to have either a walkway or something there?
Rockland County, and I'm getting, I'm getting consultation from my, constantly, you're...
Indicating what?
That we're overriding the whole damn thing. And we'll deal with it ourselves. The Rockland County Highway. None. Rockland County Health, mosquito code, and sewer, so there's two.
Yep.
Rockland County Drainage, anything about permits, but there's a...
Yes, we have to get that.
Okay. Rockland County Sewer?
We have to do that.
Has two, but there's a lot of subparts.
Yep.
And there's the car spots in the D E C. And Orange Town ZBA with Orange Hill. And Rockland County Highway not objecting to this board serving as lead agency. To Booker, I think that's all I have, Cheryl. I said that. Okay, that's all I have. Mr. Young?
No comments.
Thank you, Mr. Young.
It's more than a little confusing. I can understand the validity of some of the Rockland County Planning Board's comments, but quite a few of them leave me a bit perplexed. And I remember when it was Barton's skating rink, which is way before the Orangeburg House. My main concern is that in the rear of this building, in other words, I guess it would be to the easterly side, that the trees which are there, something be done to preserve them. I don't know if you're gonna actually be able to do that, the way you're showing the location of this foundation. I question on whether or not the neighbor is gonna lose a lot of their trees, which are on their property by the construction of this building. Do you have any thoughts on that?
What we can do is potentially look to keep some of the, because the doors in the rear are really just emergency access doors. Everything else would really be in the front of the building. So, we can look to potentially move the, we have a small retaining wall back there. We could potentially look to undulate that wall to try to save as many of the trees as possible. I know if they're mature trees, some of the base might be difficult, but we can certainly look to, to do what we can.
I realize it's a very tight site. Can you possibly move the building a little bit to the west, or is that just an impossibility?
Um, I wouldn't say it's an impossibility, but we do have the tight constraint of the flood, the floodplain there. So, we are doing some work in the floodplain, we're balancing the cut-and-fill, which would be a requirement from the Drainage Agency to match storage. If we, if we push the building further to the west, it would just further exacerbate that and potentially cause more clearing and modification to the, to the western side of the property.
Now, I know it's a, it's a difficult call, even if you were to move it like even several feet, two to three feet to the west, I think that would have a substantial impact on the longevity of those trees, because as we both know, a lot of them are on the property line, they're also owned by your neighbors, and I don't think you have any desire to inflict that type of a situation on it. I would like to see that potentially to be at least investigated, to try to curtail that. Otherwise, yes, it's a very difficult site. It looks like you put some thought into it. And that's about all I can say. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Schweene?
Yeah, my only question was about the east side of the property, it's been asked and answered, so that's it.
We, we will make every good faith, ever to investigate and show what we came up with on that.
To save the trees.
To try to save the trees, exactly.
Mr. Mandell?
Yeah, just a couple of, just for clarification.
I'm sorry, hold on, Mr. Junior, I did, I'm sorry, thank you, Mr. Mandell?
Yeah, just so we do some clarification. Is this property gonna be used for retail?
Yes.
Okay, so there'll be people coming in to buy stuff, or...
You know, similarly, it was done for the guy paying for car parts, you may have somebody coming here for a plumbing part, somebody for an electrical part. In other words, it's that come in and go out.
Right, it, the, each unit there is a combination of like office slash sales, and then mostly storage, so...
Okay, so the roll-up doors for what purpose?
For vehicles to drive in and close the door.
Okay. How much acreage is gonna be, I couldn't figure it out from looking at it, is it gonna be over an acre, or less than acre disturbance?
Right now, just under an acre.
Just under?
Just under.
Yeah, clarify that, I think on the report, because it looked like nine something, plus one something, which is over an acre?
We could certainly clarify that.
Okay, show that on the thing. Also, when you come back, show us the, will you going to be doing the oil-water separator, or its equivalent? Does it, will the water flows into the...
Sure.
Okay. And the, those dumpsters, are they, the parking spots in front of them, or...
So, we're doing that to kind of keep it condensed and really cut down, because this is actually a reduction in impervious coverage from the existing. So, we're trying to, we're trying to do that as much as possible. So, what we were gonna try to come up with arrangement with the private hauler to come in off-peak hours to make the pickups, and then on the gates of the dumpster, which would be there, we could put employee-only parking, so that when they do show up, the employees, if they, if they were a conflict, the employees can move their car, not asking a, you know, a customer.
Just one last thing, looking at the plans, you have an equipment storage area. Is that being removed or not being removed?
On the existing plan?
Yeah, on the, currently you show the one-half story structure to be removed, the other stuff to be removed, but the equipment storage area, which I think is the last building...
That will be removed.
Okay, would you just correct that, put that down, I'll play it, it's to be removed? Thank you. That's all I have at this time. Thank you, Mr. Mandell. Is there anybody in the public who wishes to speak to this? Mrs. Cardenas, come up, please. Could you state your name, your record, and your address for the record?
Yes, I will. Good evening, my name is Mary Cardenas, I'm the Orange Town Historian. I live at sixty-six Pine Tree Lane, Tappan, New York. I would like to speak about the development that's proposed, and the buildings that are on that site. One of those buildings is over a hundred years old, the other one is not nearly as old. However, although these buildings may be insignificant, they certainly represent a small piece of Orangeburg's history. They represent another time, and we shouldn't discard the old before we get the new. We should acknowledge what was there. And by doing so, I, I am requesting that a plaque be placed someplace along this new development, acknowledging that the building that's on the north end of this property was Gus Wilson's training camp. It's here where Max Schmeling, Sharkey trained. They were prize fighters, and it's thought that Joe Lewis took a few swipes down there. So, I'm requesting that a plaque be placed someplace on this property, acknowledging that. And again, it's just a piece of Orangeburg's history that I'm just trying to retain and reflect. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Cardenas.
I think it's a reasonable request, and I would, I think the client who owns the property will go along with the plaque.
Okay, so I ask that the applicant, that Mrs. Cardenas, can coordinate what it is that they're looking for, and then come back and with an agreed-upon solution. Okay? So, next, come on up.
Hi, I'm Larry Vale. I'm here tonight representing the Spark Hill Creek Watershed Alliance. I, my address is three eight nine Kings Highway, Tappan. Our alliance, by the way, is dedicated to the appreciation, the protection, and the mitigation of problems in the Spark Hill watershed. And we certainly would welcome an applicant, especially for such a neglected property, that would promote all three of those goals. And, and I understood that this was gonna be more of an environmental requirement review, that's what it said in the advertisement, but you're talking about uses as well. So, I'm prepared to talk about some of the environmental things, but I'd just say that Mr. Brenner didn't seem to be too certain exactly what the retail use would be here, and I would just ask the board to consider very strongly that this isn't a, a kind of a front for a warehouse operation, which I think would be very unsuitable for this property. Retail sounds perfectly suitable, but the rest of my remarks are about the environmental aspects and the flooding aspects. I think the, the board probably already knows that as far as water quality goes, the Spark Hill Creek is on the New York State Priority Water Body List, and this particular segment has not been... segment has not been completely verified as being impacted, but it's on that list, and I'm sure it will be verified. It's just a question of bureaucratic operations. What you also probably know as local residents is that this is, I think, ground zero for flooding on the Spark Hill Creek. I, I know that that culvert unfortunately was not replaced with all the work that's done on Route three forty, so it looks like it's going to be with us for a while. That is one of the worst places for flooding, and I think you're, you should address the flooding issues very carefully and review the applicant's engineer study very carefully. As far as, as, and, and also consider that, that they are improving the culvert just upstream, where there's also very bad flooding at Mountain View, so there'll be even more flooding downstream at this site. I, I realize that the one acre of disturbance is required in order to have a, a stormwater pollution protection plan, but in this case, I think this is a, an ideal spot for this kind of protection, because regardless of the engineering that's gone on there, I don't see this as improving the situation. In fact, I see it as being worse. From my reading of this plan, I see zero detention. I see zero treatment. I see zero infiltration into the soil. What I do see is two pipes that lead directly to the stream from the outlets on the, the, this particular large building. Right now, you have a bunch of disjointed small pipes, and at least it scatters the water around. Now, there's going to be two highways that go straight to a concentrated input to the stream. I want you to look at that very carefully. And there, so even though, I, I think this is a case where there should be some green infrastructure that's required by the board. Those small pavers, I doubt if they're particularly effective, but you should look into that. If you don't mind, if I could continue for another twenty seconds?
No, Mr. Vale, I do mind, because I've, I've told everybody tonight, and it's going to be three minutes.
Okay. Well, the last thing I'll say is that I think you should have a long-form SECRU review on this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vale. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak to this? I see none and I hear none. Mr. Bond makes a motion to coast the public to portion. Mr. Sweeney, seconds. All in favor? Aye. Thank you. So... I need a motion for lead agency. Mr. Sweeney makes the motion, needs second. Mr. Mandel, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion for neg deck. Mr. Young makes the motion. Mr. Bond, seconds. All in favor? Aye. And I need a motion for preliminary with conditions. Mr. Mandel makes the motion. John Giordello's five. Bruce Peters, fourteen. Rocket County Plannings, everything except nine and, excuse, I'm sorry, everything except for eight and nine, number, number eight is because it's wrong? It's not applicable to this application? Do you have, I need a motion to override number eight?
Motion.
Mr. Mandel's? Mr. Sweeney, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
And I need a motion to overall all of nine, between nine and nine point one one.
Are there any of the nine that you said, oh, knowing or discussing?
You know, I'll tell you what, why, you know, for, if, 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 if the Rocket County Planning Department wants to clarify and put this in a little bit more easily understood, for now, I'm, I'm, for right now, I'm making a motion to override. I need a motion to override all of nine because of how disjointed it is. And, and for us to sit here and try to go through each one of these to satisfy them is absolutely ridiculous, especially when it comes to just, we're talking about parking, okay? If it had anything else to do with this stuff, I would be okay. But let them make the clarifications and come back to us and tell us exactly what, what it is that they're looking for, and then we can do it. I need, so, Mr. Bond, Mr. Young makes the motion, second? Mr. Bond, seconds. All in favor? Aye. Okay? So that's the way we're going to do it. And that's because it's too, it's too convoluted to, uh?
I've never seen a comment like this.
Yes.
Perhaps we might want to say it's seemingly contradictory?
Okay, because of it seeming, because as Mr. Dell says, it seems, seems like it's contradictory.
Seemingly self-
And we've never seen anything like that. And for them to ask us to go through this stuff at a meeting, you know, is, we're essentially volunteers for this. They do it as a living. If they want to clarify it, let them clarify it. I'm tired of this. Let her come here and let her give up her night and have her come and, or, no, no, it's not him. He's a figurehead. I'm talking about Arlene. So let's figure it out. I know who's writing this up. Sorry. It's a pet peeve I have with the Rocket County Planning Department, because I have a, we have a Rocket County Executive that says we're, you know, what, what do we do about shared? Why do we have a planning department here and a Rocket County Planning Department coming and telling us? It's ridiculous. So let's, let's try to figure it out. Yeah, okay, it's part of state law, sorry, but it shouldn't be. Okay, so then I'll talk, I'll talk to the governor. I'm tired, I, I, I spent a long day. That's right. Okay. I'm always corrected when it comes to this, when I get irate, so I'll, I'll stand corrected. Anyway, let the Rocket County Planning Department clarify what it is, what they're looking for us to do, and come back. Otherwise, it stays out. Okay? And we'll take care of all the parking and the way it's, you know, the, what happens on the site and the way people enter and exit, okay?
Well, the only, what do you have to concern with is the sidewalk ending at that, on the, on the northernly side, it doesn't go along the westernly side. I don't know, the ones that are there, what, what's at the back of it?
That's, the, the westernly side is, is the front of the building. So it's just, we were just giving pedestrians a chance to get from the front or the rear, eastern side, to park them out in the back, to the front of the building with safe pass. That was it. I mean, it's mostly just going to be walk-up type stuff. I think the majority of the people that come will probably use the parking in the front and just walk across to the front door. So.
Oh, there? So that green is parked?
Yeah, that's going to be, that was some of the, because we're not required to do a swift, but we were trying to do some green infrastructure. We are, we are looking to try to, one of their other comments was about curbs. We're trying to keep the curbs out, so we're just sheeting the water into the area, not so much point discharge. And just trying to keep the impervious gap, you know, that's what we're really trying to do. But they do have some comments that I think will help with pedestrian safety of the site, so I can certainly amend our plan and present it to you in the future.
Thank you. Rocket County Highway? None. Rocket County Health, two. Rocket County Drainages, comments. Rocket County Sewers, there, too, with their subcomments. The D E C letter. And that's it. And Booker, did I say Booker? I think I did. No? Yeah, Booker and their sixteen. Okay? All in favor? And a second? Mr. Sweeney, seconds. All in favor? Okay.
Thank you.
Finally. Skey.
Peter, come on up.
Are you guys here for that? For Skey?
Peter's here, right?
Come on up. I guess they're comfortable where they are? Okay.
Donald Brenner, again, attorney for Skey, developer, and Peter Skey's here. He's the owner of the property.
So where are we?
Okay, if you'll take a look at, this thing got temporarily delayed based on the fact that the town board had passed the moratorium. If you notice from your packet, Resolution three, three, four, gave this applicant a hardship status, and he's able to continue with the application, which is what he's doing. Primary, again, this is a small unit being put on the corner of the property, which will only receive and will not transmit in any way. I, we got a report from two consultants, one consultant being the one in terms of transmission problems, which he said there is no problem. We have a second report in relation to the structural situation. We spoke to the engineer. He just wanted to beef up in a certain way, which we have no problem in doing. We also have an engineering report here, fully by a professional engineer and sealed by an engineer as related to the design. We also have a letter here from the abutting church owner saying that they approved the project, and we will put that into evidence for the-
Is it a record? Okay, not into evidence. Thank you, Mr. Brenner.
Into the record, I, I.
You know how I feel about courtroom stuff.
Sometimes it feels like a criminal trial.
There you go. Good, go, yeah. That's what we want tonight at nine thirty.
If I could just briefly add, as you know, we've been-
This is the, I'm sorry, go ahead.
-application in for quite a long time.
Yes.
We did hire your consultants at your request on the R F signals to prove there were none, as well as the structural. So the only reason this is now is because of the moratorium came in nine months into the process for us.
Okay. So the P R C has no other comments. There's the resolution from the town board from June twenty, two thousand seventeen about the moratorium. There is the correspondence from the energy, the radio frequency engineer dated March twenty-third. There is correspondence from the structural engineering firm, Pepe, dated April fifth.
I just wanted to comment on the Pepe one.
Sure.
Two things.
Which one?
As Mr. Brenner indicated, under structure class, we did speak to him. The, the issue came up about that there's a concern that the thing could fall, you know, on adjacent property. I did speak to the engineer. I'm not, certainly not testifying, but what the board could do is make it a condition that the, um, construction plans that were submitted were acceptable if this were kind of in the woods, and if it fell, there would be no issue. Because of where it is, he's indicating the way to resolve this comment would be to kind of take off the top and make it a little wider at the bottom, which I'm sure your construction people can do. So if you want to make that a condition, that to get maybe either him to sign off on it, or the building department to sign off on the, on the structure and to, to address his comment, I think that would be appropriate.
Well, that's, that's what we asked for, right? That's what we asked for the engineering, somebody to say that, so I, I have a problem with that.
Right, but it's not said right now. What I'm saying is you could make it subject to review by the building department after, you know, after you give it the approval.
There's no problem with that.
Okay, Mr. Brenner, what else, Mr. Magrino?
The only other issue was, and I had this discussion, Mr. Brenner, says the code requires them to be located at least five hundred feet away from the nearest existing communications tower. This is hundred fifty-six feet from the other one. So, you know.
But is this really a communications tower?
That's where we differ.
I thought that that's what we tried to establish the first time they came here.
Well, here's, here's, you know, and, and I sat with Mr. Brenner and gave him an opportunity to convince otherwise, but the definition of a wireless communication facility is any facility for the receiving or transmitting of wireless signals for commercial purposes such as cellular, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay. But the thing is, but the other, I, I, and I don't want to, again, you can, you'll, you'll correct me, but I think that-
If you're wrong.
I think that, that that was put in there so that people could co-locate, you know, so that, that we would look into co-location, you know, and I, and I think that this is a unique, this is a unique, it's not like it's two cell towers going up within five hundred feet of each other. It's, you know, this is a, 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 a unique structure for whatever it is that they're transmitting.
Alls, alls eight point one five sub four says new wireless communication cells may not be within five hundred. No, I'm just saying, I, I understand what you're saying.
Would, so they would have to go for a variance, that's all?
Alternative would be a variance.
Yeah, so then let them go for a variance.
Oh, you gotta be kidding.
Um, that's what the code is.
Understood. I would just ask, with all due respect, why didn't I get sent for a variance twelve months ago when I came to the board?
You can't until you get an approval.
It's not that, the preliminary discussion, the preliminary discussion-
What's that? I, my client's likely backing out when I don't have approval tonight, so I'm, the town's going to lose this opportunity. It's just, it's really a shame. I just want to make sure everybody knows. I'll try to tell them we have to wait till September for a variance, but they cannot believe that this is taking twelve months to get to this point, and I just keep coming back and doing everything, but.
I don't make-
I, I do want to say when I met with Mr. Giordello, this thought about two years ago, it was never felt that that was the problem. He just wanted to make sure it didn't fall into that situation. I, I understand it, but I think the planning board can override.
Mr. Magrino?
Listen, we, no, no, it's not my call. This is Rick Oliver, who is filling in for Mr. Giordello temporarily.
I think Rick Oliver can override.
We discussed it. I, you know, he's acting as the building inspector. You know, it's, it's the building department's call. If this came in, you know, even if you gave it the approval, it could, when they came for the building department, they could say, well, you never got a variance. It's within five hundred feet.
Right.
So.
Let's hear what the audience has to say. Do we have to speak about this? What do you, you got anything, Mr. Young?
No, sir.
Mr. Dell?
Yes, just two quick questions.
First, how far is this from the property line?
About five feet from the property line, which we're allowed to do.
All right, and that's towards the church side?
On the church side, and we have a letter from the church saying they're-
Okay, how tall is the antenna?
I think it's seventy-five feet.
All right. How far from the property line is the building of the church?
Well, I, I, I know, I know what you're kind of saying, but that's why we're going to be beefing this up, so that we don't have this problem.
No, I understand. I just wanted to know as a point of information.
I don't.
I, I, I don't know, but the cell tower that's a hundred and fifty-six feet away is a hundred and seventy-five feet tall.
And that, that'll hit the building faster than this would?
Well.
I mean, it's just, and that's-
Mr. Dell, let's, I just want to-
I, I understand, Mr. Chairman. I'm trying to hurry this along.
Yeah, let's.
All right, I understand, all right.
And this is just a pole. This is not a tower. It's just a pole.
All right, and it will say in the decision, this is for receiving only?
No, well, this is a pole, but it has wings on top.
It's, it's, will look very much like a TV antenna that people used to have on their house.
Well, some of them-
An old-type monopole antenna. I, it's all been submitted. You have samples of it. I did renderings.
There are wings on top. That's- It looks like a, it looks, it's like a, it's like a hand radio.
That's, that's what it is. It's a shortwave radio antenna.
Right.
All right, my questions have been answered. Thank you.
Mr. Bond?
I, I really have to ask you something.
Mr. Sweeney?
I'm just, one quick, I'm just to kind of respond to Mr. Skey's comment about why was he told earlier about any possible variance? You know, we can't send to the zoning board until we get preliminary. We haven't gotten preliminary yet, so that's what this is for today, right?
Yeah.
Mike, I'm just trying to make sure on that.
The, the, the only thing is, you, you have the power under your code to waive that. That's what I'm trying to say. You have the power to approve it tonight.
Okay, let's go, let's-
Well, you have, they have the power to grant the SECRU negative declaration. They have the power to grant preliminary. And they have the power to waive the-
The variance.
The side and the front yard variance.
That's correct.
Not the five hundred foot.
Oh, well, that's where we had a little difference of opinion.
Okay, so, so we don't have the right to waive the variance for the, for the five hundred foot between what?
Right, not the 500 foot.
So they have to go, so they have to go.
I really appreciate you've been here all night, and I don't, I just, if I could ask one question?
That's fine, go right ahead. I'm just, his stones, not yours.
So, so...
You can talk all night.
So if the church wanted to put a satellite dish on their roof, do they have to get a variance?
Satellite antennas are different. It's, it's not...
That's not true. What you said in, in there is it, it's not, it's a wireless...
You know what? Maybe they do. How about that for the answer?
Okay, so that's fine. So I'm just curious, so when people go and put an antenna on their, on their roof, they have to get a variance if they're within 500 feet?
No.
Why not?
Go ahead, Mr. Magrino.
Well, I mean, they're...
No, I'd like to know why not, though.
Because it doesn't fit the definition of a wireless communication facility.
If I put a ham radio antenna on my roof, that's what this is. It's not, to the point that was raised earlier, this code was clearly written around cell towers. This is not a cell tower.
And, and let me tell you...
And it's, it's really unfortunate that I'm, the town, I would, look, I lose out...
I know you keep saying it's been two years. The plans, it wasn't until February that the board even got plans that could be reviewed.
That's untrue. I, I sat in the planning board in November, October and November of last year with this plan. We had meetings with you where you asked us to go back and get additional information. So October and November of last year, so...
No, but we wouldn't, we wouldn't have told you then.
The plans weren't adequate. If the plans were adequate at that time, we wouldn't be here now.
The plan, the plans were the same. The thing that you didn't like was you didn't understand the communications, so you made us hire an RF engineer to prove that it was what we were saying.
You know what?
So the plans have not changed.
John Giordello in May, in, I'm sorry, in February gave four pages worth of comments of the insufficiency of the plans.
Correct.
So that was February.
That's right.
So, you know, up until, you could have done it well before that.
We did.
We did. We wanted us to...
We, we did, and in May, and in May...
Okay, you know what? Now I'm going to stop you.
No, no, please.
Because I'm not going to have you argue with us all night, okay?
I don't want to argue with you.
You're, you're asking us to, you, you know, I don't even care. We're all done with everybody commenting up here, right? Mr. Mandel, oh, did you get yours, your, okay, sorry. Mr. Sweeney, did you do your? Okay, Mr. Mandel, go ahead.
Just in the conditions that we put, they're going to the buildings department for the structural change or whatever it's going to be, and that should be put before us before we grant final.
Okay. So whatever, whatever it is that they say as far as the base and the height, lopping off the ba, the height and putting a little stronger base, right? Is that basically what we're looking for?
Yes, that's it, removing the...
Just knowing exactly what it's going to be before, it should be finalized before it comes back here. Okay?
Correct. And what landscape they're going to put between that and the church. Okay? Thank you.
Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak to this? No? Come on up.
I'm probably a little late to this, but what exactly is it that's not...
First of all, there's a, there's a protocol.
Name and address, please.
There's a protocol. Enter the microphone. State your name.
Philip Lieberman, 26 Corrigan Way, Ol...
I have no idea. Lieberman.
26 what?
26 Corrigan Way, Oltepan.
Oltepan.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and you have a question?
Just what, I'm late in the game on this, but what is it that you're installing if it's not a cell tower?
It's not a cell tower. It's a communication tower. It's a communication device, like antenna for...
Ham radio.
Like, almost like a ham radio for whoever the client is to, to send data back and forth only between wherever it is that it's going and here. It's not a cell tower.
Okay.
It's like a...
Receive only.
Is it receiv, it's all, it's receive only?
It's only receiving.
Yeah, it's only receiving. It doesn't go out. It's, okay, so, some of these companies set up these devices so that they can get real-time data on the stocks and, and other kind of data from the city. And they use sites out here for that. So it goes back and forth between them. And I don't want, I'm just giving you an example of what kind of device it is. So it's not like, it can't, it's not like a cell tower where it's emitting everything out and around. It's going back and forth, kind, you know, and then, like, and you could set it up like a ham radio where people can, different people can receive the information, but they can't transmit back. It's a, it's a one-way.
Okay.
That's it. That's all I got. It's the only way to describe it.
Okay.
And it looks like a big TV antenna, antenna, except it's not 500 feet tall.
Seventy.
Seventy-five. Maybe, maybe a little less. Anybody else? Okay?
One small comment?
Sure.
Okay. CBS and Pearl River, Shopby and Pearl River have antennas where they transmit back to their company what's being sold every day, and they are less than 500 feet.
But, Mr. Brenner, you just heard Mr. Magrino tell you that we're not allowed to override this or to send it. So why are you even bringing it up? That's a fight that you're going to have to have with him, not, not with us. We're, we're being told by our attorney that we cannot override that variance.
I think he said this building department, he's, he's relying on the building department coming up whether, what am I asking for?
It's two things. It's, the engineer made the note and comment about the 500 foot, and we, I discussed it with Mr. Oliver this evening about making a determination. And I'll let him talk about a determination if he had an opportunity to review it. I mean, again, I met with Mr. Brenner this afternoon. I told him if he had something that could convince me otherwise, and I don't think he has come up with it.
I, well, from my point of view, I can only go by the definition that the town has set up.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
I can only go by the definition of the town has set up.
Right.
So if the definition were changed, I could review it differently, but based on what that definition says, I don't have a choice. And it's, you know...
Cheryl?
And I just want to say one thing, just so you know, in response to the report from Pepe Engineering, we did a complete structural analysis and redesign that has been submitted to the town that it resolves their issue of weight and height. So it's all actually been resolved and submitted.
So just bring out, just make sure everybody knows, like Mr. Mandel said, that it's all worked out and we can see it when you come back. I, I don't know. I'm assuming that you do not want us to override this, that you're, you're steadfast and you're...
I mean, that's his determination.
Okay.
You can't override.
Right, there you go.
This board doesn't have the power to override.
There you go. So, yeah, so you're not, there's no wiggle room. That's what I'm asking, basically.
I wish I could find something, but...
Okay.
You can have preliminary. Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I mean, I, you know, I, I would work with you, but, and I think the board will work with you, but we're not going to override somebody. We can't. Don't have the authority.
All right. I'll make a motion to close the public portion here.
Thank you, Mr. Bond. Second? Mr. Mandel, all in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion for neg.
Mr. Motion, Mr., Mr. Bond makes a motion for lead agency. Second?[1443.24]